They're standing, waiting for.
I know, I know. I'm trying to hurry. I know.
I did.
Shh. Okay, if I could have everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and we're gonna have all of our students start it for us. Our flag's right over here so everybody can see it? Alright, you guys go ahead and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys very much. Alright. Welcome. Roll call, everybody except for our students are here? Okay. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Alright. We are going to start with our communications with our recognition of our staff and students. If I could have the NEA first?
My name is Lucy Sid, I'm a leading teacher at Woolen Elementary. And my leading teacher and I, we've been together and chose Student of the Month and we chose Philip Bowen. Philip can be described as a kind, hardworking, and respectful student. Philip displays qualities of a great student, but also an incredible person. Philip is a kid that walks into class every day with a smile and hello from his teachers and classmates when they see him at class. Philip is not afraid to ask questions and always gets his pull after a sound with his language. He is highly aware and considerate of people who surround him and is a student who will go out of his way to make every student feel included and accepted. It is my privilege to have him as a student of the month from Woolen Elementary.
Hello.
Hello. You can face us.
Okay, cool. We're from Point Elementary, I'm Alicia Addy, I'm a grade teacher.
I'm Shannon Pike.
And Kitty Jackson, would you come up and stand with us? So Jackson is one of my fifth grade students and I've actually enjoyed knowing Jackson ever since he was in first grade. So he's the same age as my son and he does scouts with him too. So it's been really cool to get to meet his fifth grade teacher and to celebrate his last year at Point together. So Jackson has soared through fifth grade with his quiet determination and willingness to push himself through challenging experiences. The growth we've seen in Jackson throughout his elementary career at Point has been amazing. Jackson has become an eager, willing participant in classroom discussions. He's taken on the responsibility of advocating for himself in all settings and he's developed a love for storytelling and writing. Favorite thing, right? He is also a positive, respectful role model and caring friend to all his classmates and teachers. Jackson is truly an inspiration to both our staff and all of our peers at school. Thank you, Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It has been a gift to have Connor Pures in the traveling family for the last six years. Connor has always noticed what needed to be done and was usually the first one to take care of it without being asked. Every morning, the words of our touchstone echo through our classrooms. We're tigers of integrity and do the right thing even when no one is looking. Ms. Kelly Brogan, one of Connor's former teachers, said Connor was an absolute tiger of integrity every single day. Our principal, Dr. Shannon Henderson, says Connor has strong character, always treating students and teachers with respect, patience, and care. He has a gentle demeanor by which others truly enjoy being in his presence. Connor maintains a positive attitude and strong ethic, always offering his very best during learning, which in turn positively impacts overall classroom community through his contributions. His unfailing kindness and respectfulness, as well as that shy smile, will be missed next year's flower line, but we are honored to call him one of ours and are confident he will always be a tiger of integrity.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
My name is Ashley Ward and I am the English teacher at Oakdale Senior High School. This is Jacob Ross. Jacob Ross deserves this character award because he has shown an abundance of integrity and good character this year in his English three class. He goes out of his way to help both the teachers and the other students. He is attentive, kind, and hardworking. I know that I can count on Jacob to be a leader in our classroom. His good character is not limited just to the classroom though. No matter where he is in the school, and I see him in the halls all the time, he displays the kind of character we want all of our students to possess through his treatments of others and his behavior. I'm so proud of you this year and I'm very proud to be your teacher, so congratulations.
If we could have all the NEA kids come back up for a quick picture? Okay, if we could have Mosaic Elementary next?
Good evening, we're gonna begin tonight's presentation by some of our groups, student clubs that we have. And I believe we're gonna start with a robotics club, but you're also going to hear from our leadership team and then also from our production club. So a lot of great things to share. First of all, have our robotics club come up and then our two teacher representatives.
Good evening, I'm Marilyn Donaldson.
And I'm Erin Nichols.
And we're co-chairs for the Robotics Club at Mosaic. We decided this year to divide robotics into two sessions, a fall session and a spring session, in order to reach more children this year, so we took approximately thirty kids per session. And in the fall, we used the... Thank you. We used the Lego Mindstorm kits and the students were able to build robots. And then every week, they improved upon those robots. And at the end, we invited their parents for a showcase presentation and had a little breakfast for them. And so it was really exciting to see, and there's some photos up there for you to see them in their process of building. It was exciting to see how some used the kit manual to build and some used their own design to build their robots.
And then in the spring session, we are still meeting weekly and we took time to research and figure out how gliders worked. And they are currently working on building balsa gliders for the Boeing Engineering Challenge, which we participated in last year and we were the only elementary school last year. And we are still the only elementary school this year as well. So our final flight day for that is on April 27th. So if you wanna come watch us at Wash U and see our gliders compete to see how long they can fly, how long they can stay in the air, and distance. So they're getting really excited about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can go ahead and pull that down. Yeah, there you go.
Hi, I'm Macy.
Hi, I'm Libby.
So we're Production Club and our core sponsors are Ms. Rachel Aaron's, who is a first grade teacher, and Ms. Nichols, who is our librarian.
We meet every Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. We come in, we sign up for what we want to do, and then we record and put it in a file and send it out to the whole school.
We are fourth and fifth graders that apply for Production Club. We are the models to our school and we inform our school of upcoming events.
So up on the screen, that is our plan sheet. The plan sheet is where we choose our roles. We record our videos on WeVideo and then we mush them together to create the announcements. When the announcements are finished, we send out the video for others to watch.
We are separated into two groups, the blue group and the orange group. Each team gets their own week and because of that, we get two weeks to work on it. When the high schoolers visited, they taught us some tips and tricks to make our videos actually funny and not so awkward, cheesy, cringey, whatever you wanna call it. Anywho, our roles can include the intro, pledge, weather, lunchroom, habit of the month, different special features. Special features can be like a funny thing or what events are happening this week, birthdays, mosaic mindset tickets, zones of regulation, upcoming events, and safety tips.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Brave, hardworking, friendly. These are all good traits for a Leadership Club member. Leadership Club gives Mosaic students a chance to let their talent shine while they work to make their school a better place.
The leadership team is a team that is split up in four groups. Those groups are Friendship Team, Welcome Committee, which I am in, Journalist Team, and Design Team. The goals of Leadership is all around making Mosaic a better place. Each member is a leader that is chosen by staff. Each member is expected to maintain a high standard of academic behavioral excellence in order to remain a member. We do things such as a week all about going against drugs to planning a weekly spirit week. We work with other clubs such as Production to get the word out about aiming our school, our amazing school, towards improvement. I'd like to thank our staff members that help us through it all, Ms. Bradley, Ms. Philinchet, Nurse Carly, and Nurse Carly. They truly do make our school a better place. The Welcome Committee is a team that is responsible for taking care of our school's visitors and welcoming a new student. All roles can include greeting our school's guests and giving a quick tour or even leading our school's monthly seven habits of happy kids assembly. Each assembly covers one of the happy habits which are being proactive, begin with the end in mind, put first things first, think when when every time, seek first to understand then to be understood, synergize with your friends, and finally sharpen the saw or keep motivating yourself towards improvement. In the end, the Welcome Committee is a team that enjoys meeting new people, must be a good presenter, must follow our school rules, and be the best meet we can be.
So in Leadership, I'm a part of Design Team. And in Design Team, we basically just designed the bulletin board in the front hallway that provides like information about fundraisers and fun activities going on at Mosaic. And I chose to be a part of Design Team because I really like being creative and being myself and giving my own ideas.
And Leadership Journalism Team is to inform parents and students at Mosaic about upcoming events. And for example, if we had a spirit week, we would give the dates and when it started, when it ends, and... And what you do. And so... That is the job of the journalists, to write it down and inform parents and students at Mosaic. And so why I chose this job is that I had experience last year in third grade and wanted to try it in fourth grade.
I'm in the Leadership Council Friendship Team. In the Friendship Team, we make cards, bracelets, and other things that can cheer up students that are sad and might not feel so special. On the Friendship Team, we need kind hearts and empathy. Thanks.
Bye.
Is that all of them? Okay. Do a quick picture real quick. Oh, hey guys, hang on. Alright, next we'll have Berkeley Middle School.
Berkeley would like to recognize our Coding Club and our sponsor, Ms. Rachel Elsie.
Good evening, my name's Rachel Elsie, I am the sponsor of Coding Club at Margaret Berkeley Middle School. I created this club last year. We meet weekly on Monday afternoons. And I have a few of my students here to discuss what we do in Coding Club. Amina, you wanna go first?
Sure. Hello, my name is Amina Kotoric. As you can tell, today I'm gonna talk about Coding Club tonight. I'm twelve years old and I go to Coding Club after school. Coding Club is fun, oh my god, excuse me, is a fun thing to do after school. The teacher, Ms. Elsie, is really nice and kind. Coding is super fun. My favorite thing is to make a monster dance using codes. Coding involves many things and it's not that hard. Anyone can code. Coding is super easy, so don't worry about it being hard. I'd like to thank you all for listening to me. Good night.
Hello, my name is Almedina Dukatovic and I attend this club after school. It is awesome, I personally like Coding Club. I like it because it's another way to think and it's also very cool. You can make a lot of things and one of the things you can make is an emoji. And as we accomplish more codes, we naturally develop better focus and organization. It is important for kids to understand and be able to work with understanding technology around them.
Hello, my name is Dominic Feldworth. The reason I joined Coding Club is because I thought it would be fun and, well, it is because you get to do stuff on Scratch or Co.org and you get to build programs and play games like Geometry Dash, which I have a strange addiction to. I have nothing else today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next would be open period of patron comments, we had nothing there. So next we'll do standing committee reports. Anybody had anything?
I don't remember if we had a meeting since we went to the communications. I think we did. I think they reported on that already and our policy meeting was postponed, so.
Okay.
And I think they reported on the communication meeting already.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Three things. The computer science standards have been closed. We had a chance to put in comments on those. I also asked Dr. Smith to put his two cents worth in. I believe in April 11th, that information will go to the State Committee and then in May, it'll go to the State School Board for approval. Special School District had elections. We're unique in that the governing council, that's made up of the twenty-two districts that are part of Special School District, actually elect the school board. So we elected the representative from Region Three, which is Parkway, a lady by the name of Catherine Petrov. And for Region Four, we elected Latrice Morgan, who represents Ferguson, Florissant, Pattonville, and Riverview Gardens. Finally, there was a webinar this week that Missouri School Boards put on about advocacy, about the bills that are going through the state legislature right now. I should get the handout materials from that sometime in the next couple of days and I'm gonna forward those out to everybody on the board.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, we had a resolution that was given to us from the Missouri House of Representatives. Representative Jim Murphy actually presented this to Dr. Chris Gaines while he was out in Jefferson City, I believe. There's a lot of wherlasses, but I guess I'm gonna read through this.
You don't have to read them all. Just do the first one.
Just do one?
Yeah, you don't have to do all of them.
Then cut to the chase.
Alright. Wherass, the members of the Missouri House of Representatives always welcome the opportunity to recognize those show-me state educational institutions which have demonstrated remarkable success in ensuring high student achievement in its us. I'm just gonna get to the second one. And receiving a ninety-nine point six percent score on the APR. Okay, then I'll get down to the bottom here. Be it resolved that we, the members of Missouri House of Representatives, One Hundredth General Assembly, join in extending our most hearty congratulations and best wishes to the students, administrators, faculty, and staff within the Melville R9 School District at this proud moment of well-deserved distinction. Be it further resolved that the Chief Clerk of the Missouri House of Representatives be instructed to prepare a properly inscribed copy of this resolution for the Melville R9 School District in St. Louis, Missouri, which I believe is actually this. So, it's very nice.
Do you wanna just send it over there?
Sure.
Anywhere's good. Okay. Alright, moving on to our action items by consent, can I get a motion to approve five A, B, C, and D?
I need to have warrants pulled.
Warrants pulled, okay. So five C. Can I get a motion to approve five A, B, and D?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Alright, Larry?
Warrants, I was given a compensation for my expenses for the trip to NSBA, so it's not appropriate for me to approve.
Okay. Alright, so then we will vote on five C. Can I get a motion to approve five C?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Upsting.
Thank you. Alright, we will move on to student achievement. If I could have Dr. Clark?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to share with you our progress over the last year and a half of Mosaic. You can see, coming from our students presenting tonight, why I consider myself having the best job in the world. Every day is absolutely just a great time. We have a lot of fun and it's been great to be a part of it and just see the growth of our students, but also of our teachers as well. So I wanna start tonight actually with... This is data that was given by Forbes back in 2016. And this is something that we would kind of look at and kind of build our thoughts about Mosaic around. So right now, about one-third of American workers are currently in a freelancer project work. And that is going to go up to over forty percent by 2020. And when we look at this, we realize that we have to approach our learning experiences at Mosaic in a way that we're preparing them for this kind of work. And so, preparing them, this is one of the questions we ask ourselves. How is Mosaic preparing students for an ever-changing world? We don't know what careers will be available by the time they leave our education system and so we need to make sure that they are prepared. So tonight, I'm kinda gonna share with you how we prepare those students through our Mosaic approach and how this work ties with our school improvement plan. And so I have each of areas kind of tied into our school improvement goals. So hopefully that will present nice. Okay, so here is something we talk about a lot as well, that learning is a process, not an event. That one of our core beliefs is that, again, it's a process, not an event, that learning is not singular and it should not be isolated. So, and because of that, this is our mission statement. The Mosaic community will create personalized paths to empower learners for life beyond the classroom. And to meet this mission, we build specific skills within our students based off their pace of learning, their passions, their interests. And of course, ties into our personalized approach where our students are self-directed, they're persistent learners, creative problem solvers, and of course, the teachers provide us learning opportunities through a personalized approach to their individual need. Here's a little bit of a breakdown of Mosaic students. EL students, about five percent. IP right now is fifteen point six. Gifted is thirteen point two. And our free reduced lunch is fourteen point eight percent. Here's the experience of our teachers, a little breakdown of the work of our wonderful teaching staff at Mosaic. You can see that we are an experienced staff. If you break it down to, twenty percent of us have over sixteen years of experience, which is amazing how fast time goes. Then also their highest level of education. Our teachers are great role models for our students. You can see that a great percentage of them have gone beyond just a bachelor's degree for a second master, specialist, and even a doctorate degree. We have three different goal teams that provide support for both staff and students. So our PBS team, they support the social growth of our students. Leadership team, support the academic growth of our students and the professional growth of our staff. And then the community team kind of establish and foster relationships between our school and then our community. Moving on to our first school improvement goal, all students will read on grade level or show one year's growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. I have placed on a slide our first quarter results and then now our most recent quarter three results and that we have seen growth in all areas. Well, I'm sorry, excuse me, we have seen growth in most areas. Fourth grade has dropped three percentage points, but this is also kind of moving as you realize that as the year goes on, that the levels increase, reading levels, but we have sustained in most areas. Goal two is to increase the percentage of K5 students meeting expectations on district benchmark assessments from pre-test to post-test. And I placed up here, this is a slide image of our digital data wall. We meet each week within PLCs to discuss student growth, but we also meet every six weeks where it's the grade level team, our school counselor, our school psych, and also our SSD staff. And this is a picture I've left course names off, but you can see on this digital data wall that's built through Google Classroom or Google Docs, we can place on here student information and how they grow throughout the year. So you can see pre and post data, both in ELA and math, but you can also see Master Connect information, which is our benchmark. And then also, we've begun piloting iReady, so we've placed some information on there as well. We also have on this digital data wall, we have how many trips they have taken to the nurse. It's very, very helpful for us. Here's Master Connect information from the fall to the winter in math. Uh, kindergarten just took it the first time this winter. Um, you can also see in each of the areas growth from first grade 17 to 68%, uh, second grade 8 to 31, third grade 11 to 37, fourth grade 11 to 32, and then fifth grade 30 to 51% of students, uh, knowing the content standards for the entire year. Here is ELA information. And we have students only in third, fourth, and fifth grade take those benchmarks. You can see growth in those areas as well. I also wanted to place on here, um, map data from last year, and I was comparing, uh, Mosaic, of course, to the state, but I also wanted to share, uh, our progress in regards to comparing it to Lewis and Clark and Epic, both schools in the Liberty School District in Kansas City, uh, both with a focus on personalized learning. And I, I was delighted to see where we are comparing to those schools who have been focused on personalized learning for quite some time. I think Epic's in her fifth year. Uh, Lewis and Clark, probably that and maybe a little bit beyond that. Um, so I, I'm happy to see, uh, in third grade, uh, we are performing actually above Lewis and Clark in ELA, um, also in math. And then in, in fourth grade, uh, we were, uh, I would say comparable to the other, uh, two schools. And then comparable to Lewis and Clark in fourth grade math. Um, I'm gonna be on the phone though with Michelle at Epic to see out what they're doing in fourth grade math, 'cause they really have done a fantastic job. So I'm sure they're, I'd like to learn what they're doing. So, moving on to goal three, uh, increased student engagement and instruction. And so we intentionally tried to plan project-based learning lessons, kind of developed around these five areas of Portrait of a Graduate. Obviously, these are our skills that I talked about when I opened, opened it tonight about. These are skills that our students are going to need as they leave our schooling system and go into the workforce. And so we feel that project-based learning does a great job of incorporating these, uh, in the work. So, a couple pictures of students involved in the work at Mosaic. Of course, you've heard about that tonight when their students were presenting. Hopefully you had and I got a, a, a good idea of how much student voice and choice we put in all of our work. So within PBL, we, these are three areas that we really look at and try to promote with our students, students being, uh, with inquiry, having voice and choice within their work, but also reflecting upon, um, the work they've done, but also throughout the project. And so, uh, these are some of the areas that we look at in project-based learning, some of the components, a very brief definition of what project-based learning is. But you could see authentic, engaging, problem-solving, and taking on a challenge. Within these areas, you always start with a driving question. And so a lot of times the driving question is based around content standards, always based around content standards. But within that, students have the opportunity to explore, uh, again, bringing that student voice and choice. And they're always working and bu, developing a, a product that they were gonna be presenting, um, to an audience. That audience can be a parent, the audience can be other students, um, it can be the community. And so, these are the components that we use within project-based. So it's real-world work. We always have feedback based in that work. Collaboration, also public speaking. Tonight's a great example of that. Personalized approach to, um, to the student based off of their needs. And then showing their expertise. Here's some great examples of student inquiry from this year. And so if you look on the, on the slide, you can see that, again, kind of that, that, starting with that driving question is meaningful, it's appropriate to the levels of challenge. Uh, question formulation where students have the opportunity to, uh, take the project into multiple directions, and then also that sustained inquiry. Uh, the process of asking questions, finding resources, applying information, sounds like things that we ask our college students to do, but we're asking our kindergarten students through fifth grade to do these things. Student voice, of course, uh, inauthentic. Uh, students have that direction where they wanna take it, but also, uh, making something that would be a public product where they can share that with others, their expertise. And then student reflection, critique, revising, um, and coming back and even improving their projects at times. So, feedback is essential at Mosaic. Not only feedback from their peers, but also feedback from the teachers. And I'm gonna come back to feedback in a moment and how that, I believe, has impacted student achievement. Here are some of the student clubs that, uh, we have at Mosaic, very proud of, and hopefully will continue to grow upon these clubs. Uh, so Girls on Run, Leadership Club, Character Council, Production Club, and Mosaic Mad Scientist, Mosaic Voices, Infit Club, and then Chess Club. What I'd like to see is us can continue to provide some of these opportunities, not only in clubs, but within our daily practices as well in the classroom. And then our IPI scores, our instructional practice inventory. Uh, you can see our fall, winter, and spring. And these are percentages of our teachers, uh, getting a three or higher, which is, we, we kinda measure them on a one to six scale, one being the lowest, six being the highest. Six is kind of student active learning, uh, five is student learning or, uh, student conversations, four is more teacher-led instruction, three is more, um, uh, student, students working with the teacher. Um, so we have, you can see that a high percentage of the time that we are engaging our students in higher-order thinking skills, so. Moving on to goal four, so we, uh, we identified that we wanted to decrease office referrals for our students and think sheets as well by 10% in 2018, 2019 school year. And here's how we do. We actually began incorporating, well, we piled it last year in kindergarten, zones of regulation, which is typically a tier-three, uh, support for students, but we've identified that this emotional regulation is great for anyone and everyone. That it could be a five-year-old or a 50-year-old. So, um, we have incorporated this in our work. This is the work that takes place, um, through our school counselor, Ms. Blanchett. She's done a fantastic job of incorporating zones of regulation and what that looks like in the classroom, and has also, uh, have utilized second steps. Uh, in the zones of regulation, we have seen, um, students take ownership, identify where their emotions are when they come into the, to the classroom in the morning. They also, um, identify after they come back from lunch and recess, 'cause we know what can sometimes happen during that time. So, um, the students have a, a really good understanding of where they are emotionally. And, but also the strategies they can use, uh, to get what's called in the green zone, ready for learning, so. What we have seen so far, um, we are actually, what I've, I've, the data I've pulled, that we are on, uh, schedule to decrease over 10% both in office referrals, but also in think sheets as well. And what's great about the zones of regulation, our teachers have incorporated the zones of regulation on student menus as well. Um, so you'll, I'll show you a picture of that here shortly. We also incorporate the seven effective habits of happy kids, be proactive, begin with the end of mine. This year, this month, we're actually working on synergize, working together. So we feel that this language goes so well with the Mosaic philosophy. And a lot of times, of course, we know that this is something that, um, we've seen kind of more in the private sector and in companies, but we know these are the skills that we want our students to have as well. Continuing on goal four, we have began, uh, using check-in, checkout with our students. This is where students come in the morning and check in with an adult in the, in the building, also at the end of the day. We establish goals based on areas that we, uh, they wanna, where we wanna see growth. And so, since we began incorporating this year, we have seen, uh, our referrals for these particular students drop more than 50%. So we know that it's working for them. Now we just wanna scale it up. And so we're very proud of that as well. Goal five is to increase student achievement with students who have IEPs. And the blue is students who have an IEP and then, uh, the red is overall students. And if you notice in the few areas, actually students with IEPs are outperforming, um, in terms of, of percentages compared to, um, the, the Gen Ed students. And I, you know, upon reading this, um, I, I realized a couple things. I, I believe this is happening for, for, one is that goes with our co-teaching model, where we have two classroom teachers in the studio who are working with students, giving very specific feedback to each child. But we also have our SSD staff and our resource teachers pushing into the classroom, partnering with the Gen Ed, uh, staff, also giving great feedback right there in the studio, uh, to the students. So, I think that there's, there's a couple, a couple of things happening. One is just that, that collaboration and partnership between Gen Ed staff and SSD staff, but also just the importance of specific effective feedback. And when students have that, can set goals, um, they know what they're working towards, they know their strengths, and they know the areas that they want to improve. So, um, we're seeing these results. So you can see this slide in math, but you can also go, go to ELA, uh, how they're performing. This is third, fourth, and fifth grade, and then also in third and fourth grade in math as well. Goes again to show you the, the value of partnership. Uh, goal six, the Mosaic staff will begin implementing CCI in each studio, including specials areas and support staff. So on the left, to my left, is, uh, an example of, um, Mr. Schulte, our PE teacher, running a, a, uh, PDSA cycle with our students. Also on the right, this is an example of a fifth grade PDSA cycle. So they do happen to plan, do study act, they happen in the classroom. But we also have them happening on our student menus as well. Um, and so it's actually, um, it's, it's happening not in all of our studio menu, menus. We're looking towards hopefully doing that next year, but we have already began incorporating in fourth grade, um, fifth grade, and third grade, and then also in, this is a kindergarten, uh, student learning menu. And so our kindergarten students are running their own cycles on their growth. So, um, we know that, um, that when you again turn over the ownership, the students take, um, it's amazing, uh, their accomplishments, so. Goal seven is our achievement goal, I'm sorry, our attendance goal. And so we have, here is just kind of our 90/90 attendance. You can s, uh, see those percentages. I also have our total ADA from last year to this year, a slight change, not by much. Uh, we off, you know, we believe that we have our high attendance because again of that higher student engagement, students taking ownership of learning, um, getting involved. And so I, when, when students feel involved and feel part of the community, they wanna be at school, so. And then the, the final slide I wanna share with you is, and what I, when I was here over two years ago and shared about Mosaic and what is possible and kind of creating that spark and being that incubator. Uh, up here I have listed all the school districts and schools that have visited this school year. Uh, the Ashrik identifies more than one school that has, has come to visit us. Some of these districts has, have sent more than five schools. Anywhere from, you know, obviously you see local school districts from, uh, outside regions. We've had a district from North Dakota. We've had this last Friday, we had a district come from Kansas. We've had a student, um, from Wadu High School who came to visit and actually was petitioning for personalized learning in her high school. And so she was doing a whole report and she wanted to present that to her, to her principal. So, um, so I, I'm proud of, uh, the work that, um, our, our teachers have done over the course of a year and a half. I'm, I'm proud of their bravery, their courage, their dedication, their commitment. I know they spend a lot of time, um, away from their families and they, um, have, have given, um, their all. And they, they, they know, um, the work that they're doing is so meaningful and impactful. And so, um, I'm, I look forward to seeing this journey continue and, and seeing our, our, our school continue to grow. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Questions?
I'd, I wouldn't just make a comment on, um, the video that John Wolf shared with us, um, with your school is awesome. So awesome. Um, and I love the emphasis on empowering these students, which, I mean, you've been touching on forever, like, ever since you've been speaking with us of, about them becoming problem solvers and being able to work with others so that no matter what's relevant 15 years from now, they have these skills and they can do anything with it. And I think that's absolutely incredible, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for, for doing that and empowering these students to, to live that.
Absolutely. Thank you. And empowering the sense of, of them knowing, again, where they're at.
Yeah.
That's what a lot of, when they, when we have visitors come through, they're like, you know, these students can be, can give really specific details of what they're working on, you know, what they're working on, why they're working on it, and like, how it's changing them as a learner. And, um, so that's that empowerment piece.
Cool. I, I really wanna, uh, congratulate you on the way the IEP students are achieving that kind of growth, um, you know, through, through the various methods they're used in the school. It's, it's just incredible. We see so many different reports about those things, uh, over time, and it's just, it makes me feel good that, that's happening there. The other thing is that so often, um, we see kids that are extremely bright with a lot of book sense and no common sense. And I think that what they're doing on these long, long-range pro, uh, projects and really delving into, you know, uh, advancing the project is creating common sense, hopefully, in these kids that they can use lifelong. And, um, you know, finally, I just, you know, I, we were excited about it when we went to see the very first one in, where was it? Liberty, Missouri?
Lewis and Clark, yeah.
Yeah. We were excited and the fact that we have one of those here now that is probably every bit or more than the one we actually saw there, just makes me feel, like, you know, extremely proud of you and everybody at the school that's made this a reality. And I thank you.
That, thank you. Please thank the teachers, yeah, like I said.
Everybody. I said everybody there.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, thank you very much. Uh, you know, like I said, the, the staff has really come together. You know, they, they were together in this whole journey. And so, um, you know, just the work they've done, um, the compassion they've shown to each other and the students, um, like I said, the dedication has been unreal. So it's, it's very inspiring for me every day to see it. You know, to say, you know, because it, we're constantly evolving, so just, you know, just, the, the challenge comes up and they're like, alright. You know, they're, we're, let's take the, we're gonna take this on.
Do it.
Let's do it. Let's do it, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you again.
I'm just gonna piggyback on what Jean said, 'cause it was her, Larry, myself, Dr. Gaines took out there to see that. And, uh, everything that I had hoped this school would become, you guys have made it become, you and the entire team of teachers that has done it. And, uh, just because you have an example doesn't mean you can get there. There's a ton of work to going in and starting something new like this, and you have done it. You've done it on everything. There's so much in this presentation that we could just go over each point and say how great it is, but then, even looking at the numbers side, which I've always kind of wondered about as you took this approach, would the numbers come through on it? And they are. Um, and to your point, you said it exactly, it's, you're caught up, you're beating Liberty in some areas, um, you're going after Epic, you're a year and a half, they're at five-plus. So, uh, yeah, you guys are hitting it out of the park. You are doing a great job, and I look forward to seeing how much further you go and everything you come up with. It's great.
Thank you.
One of the interesting things getting to work across the state is, Mosaic is a brand. You can talk to anybody in any corner of this state and they know who Mosaic is. That's the good news. The bad news is, they know we're here. And you, you've seen that with the, with the demand of people that wanna learn, they wanna see it in practice. The, the other, the other thing is when we kind of started this idea was as an incubator. Not only is it a proof of concept, but now, now, and I guess the question is, do you have interest from other buildings that come over and talk to you? Do you see that, that this type of personalized learning, this approach can, can germinate in other elementaries?
In, in our district?
Yeah.
Uh, we had Beer Ram over this, this afternoon. Uh, we have, all, I would say that all of our schools have come to, over to visit, either in teams or individual teachers. I've had, uh, teachers from Scope, I've had teachers from high school, I've had middle school, elementary. Um, I, I feel that there are so many champions in our district that, um, want to continue moving forward, uh, providing what's great for, you know, what's best for our students. Um, I really feel that, I'm, I'm very proud of our district, uh, just thinking about, like, the last five years, you know, what's happening with Mosaic, what's happening with all of our elementary schools, and there's, you know, middle schools now with the academy, the work that MyPath is taking. Um, we have a MyPath student that comes over and, and is actually working for a fifth-grade teacher. He wants to be a teacher. It was actually one of my former students at Forder. Um, and so, you know, he's, he's, he's actually leading lessons with our fifth-grade students. And so, just that collaboration, that partnership is, is, that's what I found has been really rich within this whole experience, is just like how we're connecting high school students with elementary students. What, that is that offer to an elementary student, what that offers to the high school student? So, um, that, yeah, so I, I, I found that, um, there's so many exciting things happening around, right now in this district. There's a lot of things to be proud of.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So what do you visualize down the road a piece? I mean, what are your, what are, what are, what are some of your visions and goals for Mosaic that we haven't even heard? I mean, that, you know, you probably haven't even spoken out loud yet.
Um, you know, obviously, you, you wanna increase this, the opportunities for students to have more voice and choice. voice and choice. I mean, that's, you know, is there, so, one thing I'd like to do is give more ownership to students on the report cards.
Get what?
Give students more ownership on their report cards, potentially. Students are understanding all the content standards and be able to show artifacts that relate to those. Students reporting out on those. I'd like to see us continue our work in design thinking. Love, I mean, possibility of almost like a mini MyPath for elementary students, what does that potentially look like? I don't know. So those are some of the things that I think about.
That runs through your.
And just kind of, yeah, along with the other two marbles maybe that are left up there, but no, so those are really, everything that I'm thinking about always relates around student voice and choice, and there's them owning the learning. That's what everything, you know, revolves around for me. And I would say that for the staff as well.
Excellent. Just echo everybody else, kudos to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Me too. I can't really add a whole lot. The only thing I wrote, because I took little notes, was that I see a lot of ownership by the students, which is that next step from the empowerment, then they can own it. And I'm starting, you know, you really do see that, which is pretty exciting.
I just want to say thank you to the board for believing in this journey for us. I want to thank you too, thank our parents for taking that risk as well, and, you know, believing in Mosaic, and of course, to the hard staff, you know, all the hard work they've done, just incredible. And to our amazing students, who you got a chance to meet a couple of them tonight. I invite all of you to come over anytime you want and just immerse yourself into it. It really, like I said, I've got the best job in the world.
There's one session for a cartwheel.
Yes, exactly.
Is there a story here?
Can you still?
Many, many stories.
Can you still click your heels together?
I was thinking the same thing. Yeah, we want to see the heels click one more time.
Questions or say anything, you can do that right now.
Come on.
I will.
Alright.
Thank you everyone, I appreciate it.
I don't know how I.
I see cartwheels coming next.
Got so lucky to end up going behind that.
What is your special talent, Dr. Kerr?
No, that is fine. I appreciate the time you allowing us to come up and talk about Berkeley Middle School and all the great things that we have going on. Both Michelle and I love being there and excited about all of our challenges that we have and how we're facing those as well. Our mission to be a highly effective school of character, which creates a safe and caring environment while promoting independent thinking and learning through engagement. We think that our mission and vision end up correlating directly with a portrait of a graduate in everything that we do each and every day. Just to kind of give you a little bit of a snapshot of Berkeley in general, it was kind of hard to read, but the percentages on the left-hand side of the column kind of correlate with the bar graph, so with our free and reduce and IEP. And then the percentages on the right-hand side are for the line graph, which is our ELL population. And so our free and reduced lunch kind of fluctuates between 44 and 52% kind of based on the time of the year. And then also our IEP percentage has decreased from our high being 18.8% back in 2013, 14, to currently we're only at 14.35%. Our ELL continues to increase from 14% back in 13, 14, to currently we're at 31%. And it looks like it's going to continue to grow through the 2024 school year. Celebrating our diversity at Berkeley is one of the things that we really do like. Thirty-six percent of our kids are bilingual. Twenty-four different languages are spoken at home. Sixty-five percent of our students fall into some type of a subgroup, and this year we've had 21 newcomers, which would be students that are in the country for less than a year. We put our top seven languages that are spoken at home up there for you guys to see and celebrate that with us. Also our elective courses. From last year, we ended up going to the eight-period day for this school year, and that increase in an elective course both semesters for all of our students increased our elective numbers from 1,217 last year to 2,263 for this year. And you can see some of the numbers that have increased a bunch, so in, at Berkeley, what classes they are most interested in right now. One of the things that we're really excited about for next year, kind of adding on to choices and opportunities for kids is our Bobcat Academy, where we're going to have both science and math as a class, and then ELA and social studies, where they're going to be able to just have a different experience in school with project-based learning, inquiry, and personalized learning as well. Our historical enrollment, we are currently at 648. It looks like 647, 648 would be next year as well, and our low being 572 back in 2015, 16. So our ADA percentage, we are always pretty much right at 95%. I put up the past four years, including this year, all the way up through February. Our 90/90 is kind of where we are focusing most of our attention with our attendance, because it's one of the areas that we're constantly right at 90%. And so things that we're kind of doing to look at that, we have a daily and weekly attendance board that the students see as they come into school every day, that kind of gives, breaks it down by class and for the entire building for the previous day, and then who had the best attendance for the week by class the week before. And we also have a truancy reduction program, which we are slowly changing over to a student encouragement program that we started last year over at Berkeley, that we have kind of got the, a family court judge in Joe Lassiter, and also juvenile deputy officer in Kim Valdez to come in and kind of talk with the kids, kind of get them in school, because we always think if they're in school, we're going to end up being able to teach them a lot better. And, but just give, have them get other ideas and encouragement to the kids to keep them out of the system. Also, let me go back with our, we also have bi-weekly meetings with our counselors, our administrators, our attendance secretary, the nurse, and the SRO to kind of look at the whole child and kind of see what problems they're having with attendance and what we can do to make sure, to handle any attendance issues that we're having before it ends up being chronic. This is kind of a sheet, just a snapshot of the sheet that we kind of use to come up with our, keep track of our average daily attendance, just as a quick snapshot for everybody to see. Our administrators and counselors have this, and it kind of comes up with different patterns that we're having. So what days of the week end up being the day that most of the kids are there. Percentage-wise, it's very close for days of the week, and then just different things that can end up affecting our attendance, which at Berkeley is kind of Muslim and Bosnian holidays. I think different than a lot of schools, we are a relatively young staff, where 40% of our teachers have been at Berkeley for three years or less, and also 40% of our teachers have had totally teaching experience of six years or less. I did put up our historical MAP data from 2015 to 17 to kind of show that we have been making improvements each year. We did take a little bit of a dip last year, like a lot of the state did, in our ELA scores. And I want to spend a little bit of time kind of talking about our MAP, math scores, because part of it is where it looks like we had nobody in proficient, but I'll kind of explain it the best of my ability with it. We really did, but they didn't show up on the DESI website. So on the DESI website, it states that a report suppresses populations with fewer than 10 students, which we would have had in advanced. And if that achievement level is zero, an asterisk is used for that achievement level and the next lowest level, which is why we got asterisks, or it looks like we got no credit for proficient kids on the MAP test. With that being said, the thing that we are really proud of is our Algebra I kids, and all of them scoring advanced or proficient. In fact, 83% of our kids ended up scoring advanced on the Algebra I EOC. And kind of my philosophy with that is, one of our goals is to push the kids to the highest math level that we can. So we're constantly looking to increase our advanced math, our challenge math numbers. And I would argue that we have the majority of the kids placed correctly, where we have anybody who can be successful to be put in Algebra I. And for our science scores, we did not have science scores for last year due to it being a field testing year. For our Mastery Connect, it is, on the left side of the screen is our fall numbers. So the top is our IEP kids, and our bottom are Gen Ed kids, and just to show that we have had increases in all of our Mastery Connect, both in math and ELA. One of the things that we are really working towards is increasing total, like I think everybody is, our MAP scores, which I think really is for a daily process of getting kids to understand the curriculum, and it's not a one-day event. And that, but to help with that, the MAP schedule, we have changed what we're doing with our MAP schedule, and we're actually testing through content area and through the teacher record. So the kids will be testing throughout the day, depending on when they have that class, and both teachers and students are really excited about doing it that way, so they're testing with somebody that they know and not somebody that we did grade levels in the past to where it could be kids that they don't normally have in a class, a teacher that they don't normally have, and we think that we're going to have better results because of that, and then other things that we're doing. But we're going through six co-teaching model training every month this semester, where we have an SSD facilitator coming in, working with the Berkeley teams, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for ELA, to kind of go through strategies, coaching, feedback, to ensure fidelity in the process that we're implementing, and then also for next year, add math into that as well. So with our comparative schools, I have a bunch of information on this, kind of the thing that I wanted to say with our comparative schools, is we're kind of in the top half with our free and reduced lunch and our IEP population. The thing that is kind of us off the charts, charts with our comparative schools is our ELL percentage. And this kind of gives you a better idea of where we're at with them. This one kind of reads weird, so it goes from right to left, so as you see, we're the one way up at the top. But ultimately, when we're looking at comparative schools, if we look at schools that are similar size to us, similar IEP percentage, similar free and reduced lunch, and that, then we are comparing ourselves to other schools that end up having a much smaller IEP percentage and that. But if we go the other way, then we are way off with population, free and reduced, or and IEP percentage. So I have a ton of data on here for you guys to go through if you want. I also don't want to bore you with all of it, but ultimately, we love it at Berkeley, we have great kids, we have great parents, great faculty, and we love all the things that we are doing, and we would love for everybody to follow us and give us any feedback you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I swear they turned it off. You set that up, didn't you? Anybody have any questions?
I have, I have quite a few, but I'm not going to get into them all here tonight. I have, in perusing this earlier on in the week, I had so many questions that I thought, oh gosh, this is not going to work at the open meeting, so I'm going to, what I'm going to try to do is get together with you and, and find out, you know, like, you mean, okay, so there was, no one below proficient on that algebra test, huh?
No.
That was amazing, that's just wonderful. And, you know, I think a lot of the questions that I had are, you know, maybe were answered by you, that you're experimenting with new techniques and co-teaching and, you know, different things that are going to affect the reception of the student, or how the student receives the information possibly, and is tested on it afterwards. And, but I do have some concerns, particularly with the subgroups and things like that, and so I guess, you know, what it boiled down to is, is there something that we are not addressing at Berkeley Middle School that, that we could address as a board to improve what's going on?
And I think one of the things that Dr. Smith and Adam have also talked to us about that we're going to be able to do this year that we have not in the past. So with the several students that need an interpreter for the test in and of itself, I think we're going to be addressing those so they're able to understand the test that they're taking, which, that will give us better results as well.
Well, yeah, that would help, that would certainly help.
I'm in the, I'm in the same boat as Jean with this. It's, well, I've got an order to how I want to say this. First of all, data is never boring, so I don't know where that came from.
Yeah.
I want to ask a question first. Did you say you expect ELL to keep growing?
Correct.
And you had, what was the number you thought by?
I think currently, we're at, right at 200, and we will be somewhere in the range of 230, 240.
Okay. I want to say on eighth grade math, DESI's official thing with it, you were robbed. Algebra though, great, that is absolutely awesome, and I love the fact that you're pushing as many kids into that as you think can handle it, it's a pretty good number from what I So this is a little bit more on the philosophical side, where Jean was coming from. I look at Berkeley, and I feel you guys are one of our most important schools. So when we look across our district and we look across the state, somebody with a 0% FRL, a 0% ELL, and they come out with high MAP scores, well, go figure. It's, you know, every kid there came in understanding English, they all had pre-K, you know, daycare, also had a parent who stayed at home and ran through all that stuff with them, and you know, they were all prepped, right? They were all ready to go. You guys are the ones that prove whether we are truly, as a district, breaking through the achievement gap and, you know, helping every kid and getting to the point of equitable education. If we're going to prove that Melville is the best school district in this state, it's where you're at that that's going to happen. And I love Mosaic and everything else, so don't anyone take offense with this, but...
Scott's a great guy.
You guys have the highest challenges, and when you figure those out and you're able to get past that and you're able to make that equitable playing field, that's when we're truly, you know, at that level of being a super great district, like above everybody else. We're climbing on them, and got faith in you, but I'm kind of like where Jean's at on this one. I think there's probably some follow-up individually, not as a board, to try and understand a little better, because, you know, where things are at, what is it that could be done? Is there anything even outside of the box that people haven't even tried before? Had a conversation with Dr. Smith one time, the ultimate would be one-to-one, not technology, but teachers, students. Probably a little unaffordable, but is there something that we can do that helps there?
Multi-lingual teachers as well.
Yeah, so I've gone on quite long there, but, you know, it's, you guys are doing great work, you're a place where we really do need to focus and support you and help you as much as we can, and hopefully we can do that going forward.
Appreciate it.
A couple of things. I took a look at what the cohorts looked like in 2017 to 2018, in all of the middle schools. And all of the middle schools went down in math. But the more I think about that, the more it'd be nice if there was some kind of a metric that would show you the impact of when kids have the skill to get into algebra, what's the downside effect, where you get more of a, what I'll call normalized view of what you're doing. I know I'm, I'm working with some of the people at NSBA that do process improvement, and we're trying to work on what kind of a demand metric can you put together because of that, the complexity, the three things you've talked about, ELL, FRL, and IEP? Because it's the mix of those, and it's the issues of how many people are in the same, same group? Because if one person covers all three of those, well, then you've got a little bit different multiplier. So I'm trying to work that, and I'm trying to have some influence with DESI to try and look at that metric and not, not use the bird's eyes and really put the numbers in when they're supposed to be. Because you're not the first person that's brought that up to me. And I've made some phone calls, and I'm not sure they're, I've gotten to the right people yet.
I appreciate it.
All right. I can yell, I can use my mom voice, and we'll be fine. No, I mean, I echo a lot of what they say. You are a, you show, your school is a representation of what our district truly is, and that education isn't always easy. And, you know, when we start looking at charter schools wanting to come in and different things like that, you know, it's great when you can pick and choose who are going to be your kids and who you're going to teach and who you're not. But it shows the dedication and the hard work you guys put in when we have to teach all students. So I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. We're very lucky, so thank you.
Yeah, you're up next.
I can't do anything that Scott does.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to consider agreement for dual credit offerings with St. Louis County Community College. And go.
If you, for to your, your, your E-Board notes, you will find some of the rationale that's in there. And so some of the questions I know that you had asked late last week, early this week, there were really three parts we wanted to highlight, and that was the difference between early college and dual credit and dual enrollment. So I tried to provide some rationale in there just to highlight what the pieces are. This piece that we're asking you to consider and hopefully just to move forward for the nineteen-twenty school year is about early college. And so it would revolve around an investment of about $25,000 that would be applied for ten high school students that are currently sophomores, be juniors next year, to commit to a two-year program at likely St. Louis Community College at Merrimack. So it, what it would do is they would focus on the Core Forty-two, that's forty-two credit hours, and really the general studies area. That would also allow them to be able to meet the credits specifically that they would need for a high school diploma. But so their experience would look different because they wouldn't necessarily be here for their education, they would be on a college campus site. We're not the first in the area to explore this. I'm sure we will not be the last to explore it. We have, we have Afton who's coming on board with us next year, likely to. Lindberg is exploring some things. St. Louis Public has done some things for a few years. To provide a few further opportunities for kids, because that's really what this, what this is. And for a relatively small amount of money, to be able to commit for these kids for a two-year process. Within your notes, you'll also see the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and I think the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And that's, those are, you know, obviously, that's long-term, and we're not committing to that right now, because part of it's also based upon interest of students. And so we have students right now who have expressed interest. I've spoken to students at both high schools at this point in time, so it's, you know, it's not just a one side versus the other side. We have students across the district who I think are interested in this. We would be hopeful to hit ten. Right now, applications are not finalized yet, but we've asked them to start to commit to the process because it helps us to do some scheduling for them in the nineteen-twenty school year as well. So that just gives you a little background and rationale with regards to it. So I would take any questions that you may have specifically about, or if there are questions about dual credit or dual enrollment, which look a little different.
I'm just curious about the admissions process. How are you going to choose the ten?
Sure. Well, first, we will, we obviously will go with students who apply, and that will be part of it. And so whether or not we get to ten, we're not a hundred percent certain at this point in time. We have had students, like I said, who have expressed interest. We are certainly looking for students that are, we feel are capable of being able to handle a college-level coursework at the community college. So we would have some minimum expectations in place. You know, we would want students that the very least are on pace to be able to graduate high school after two years' worth. Would there be a little bit more rigorous expectation? Sure, but I think part of it's also going to be simply who applies, who formally goes through the process, and then making some determinations as to, with sitting with the students and determining, you know, is this, do you understand what you're getting yourself into? Because I think sometimes, you know, things sound great, but sometimes kids aren't always, and parents aren't always informed as to the exact repercussions for that. So we want to make sure that students understand what the expectations are in the program.
Is there a plan in place if they decide a semester into it that they don't like?
We would only be, yeah, that's one semester-at-a-time decision. You know, so it's not a, you know, we're not committing for a full two years financially. It's, everything would simply be a one semester-at-a-time decision. You don't want a kid to continue if they do not like what they're experiencing or are not having the academic success they need to continue within a program.
How was this opportunity communicated to the students, for them to come forward and...
So much of it has been done through our council and staff at this particular point in time, just to be able to put feelers out there and see, you know, it's, there's nothing that's formal. We have a MOU, obviously, for you to consider as part of your E-Board documents, because we have had conversations with regards to St. Louis Community College. But in terms of how has it been communicated to students, part of, really, most of that has been through the counselors at the high schools, just, you know, offering up this opportunity to students. And getting a general interest.
Anything else? Okay.
I motion to approve the dual-credit offering MOU between St. Louis Community College and the Melville School District.
And I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to consider curriculum revisions.
Weren't you just here?
I should have just stayed. I'm sorry. Okay. So again, now, on this particular one, if you, if you refer to, and if I could get Mr. Wolf or Mr. Westbrook to be able to assist me with this opening up an E-Board document, there are twelve courses within your documents that you'll see. There's a thirteenth piece that's really a summary of the changes. Nine of those twelve particular courses that you see aren't necessarily new courses. They are simply, they are new adoptions to either standards or descriptions, so it's not a new course. There are only three courses that are there. And those three courses, one of them is a middle school art course that we approved for the twenty-twenty-one school year, just to expand upon with some of our more able students who have an interest in art. And the other two classes are really, they're just side-by-side classes designed to be able to replace the current class that we have in place at our high schools. So it's more of an introduction to English for, as you heard Mr. Kern speak previously about newcomers. It's designed, it's a course that's specifically designed for students who are, who have been in the country for a year or less. As you can imagine, that's a difficult process, and immersion, as much as we know how successful that can be over time, that first year or so is a particularly difficult time. And so we have continued to provide education to our students, but it's only been on an every-other-day basis. And so what we are looking to be able to do is expand upon that. One of those two classes would be the English Core Credit. The other class would be Intellect. And so those are, that's the highlight of those recommendations of those, of those twelve particular classes. And again, I would take any questions that you may have specifically.
Hi, Adam. Anybody?
We could have put it in consent, but it's always good just to kind of highlight, these are the, the changes. And I know that there's been a suggestion to try to update the historicals on it, so that way we know over time what changes have occurred and when did it occur. And that's a suggestion of our, taken to our team. So what we would hope is that in the future, these future submissions, anything we would have, you would also start to see some historicals on it. So we're only going to start kind of starting date at like 2019 and then moving forward, so that way you can see if you've seen it two times or three times or...
Right, right, right.
So that historical piece was a recommendation we've had, and so I think that's a really good one, and we will start to add that to those as well.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Can I get a recommendation?
You want me to get this one? I make a motion that we adopt the courses and curriculum revisions as presented.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
I know the next one's about money, so I can step away.
All right. The Finance Committee is going to report on Prop R.
The Finance Committee reviewed the Prop R report that we presented to the Board this winter. And so tonight, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mark Hinson, is here to comment on their review.
Thanks, Marshall. I appreciate it. As Marshall indicated, the goal tonight is to deliver our report of the evaluation of the district's commitment to the community on Prop R. Basically, we're trying to answer the question, did the district keep its commitment to the community that it made to expend the funds in the manner committed during the election cycle? So what we did as a committee is Marshall and his team have been tracking by category the expenditures that we're doing as a district. And so we, our job was to focus on the material items. We can't look at a hundred percent, though we came pretty doggone close this year. So we focused on the material items. The finance staff, Marshall and his team, pulled the source documents, so the invoices, the contracts, all of the expenditures, that, the detailed documents to support the expenditures. And we traced those amounts into the general ledger to confirm that the payments, the source documents match up to the payments actually made by the district, as well as then we evaluated the expense on the source documents to make sure they met the category and the commitment that the district had made. So on the, the report here, we evaluated each individual category, the first being Information Technology. The expense in that category was almost 1.8 million, not quite. We reviewed just shy of 1.5 million of that, seventy-five and a half percent. And then under the interventionalist and ELL program, the expenditures there were a little over 925,000, and we reviewed a hundred percent of those expenditures. Professional development salaries, the expenses were 254,000. We reviewed a hundred percent of those as well. The restoration of the activity clubs, we looked at the incremental increase over the base year that was prior to the passage of Prop R, and that incremental increase goal was a little over 80,000. And again, we were able to review a hundred percent of that. And then when some of these categories related to interventionalist and the clubs basically created additional salary expenditure for the sponsors and the positions that were created, that leads to additional benefits. So we felt like we needed to review those as well, which we reviewed at a hundred percent level. Then there was a commitment to increase professional development and the commitment to travel to some courses that aren't necessarily located here in St. Louis. And the expenditures there were just over 700,000. We reviewed just shy of 700,000, or ninety-four percent of the category. There was a commitment to provide feedback from the community to the Board through communications. There was an expenditure of just over 35,000, which we reviewed that. There was a commitment to increase capital expenditures, do some of the backlog of work that we're trying to achieve in the school district of about 2.6 million. Again, we reviewed, we reviewed a hundred percent of that. The instructional materials, just shy of 1.2, we reviewed ninety-seven percent. And school supplies, this is the smallest category that we reviewed, only sixty-six percent. It's a lot of small items, so there were a couple of large expenditures that made that up. So what I'm pleased to be able to report is, of all of the expenditures that we were able to review, everything met, fell in the category that the district had committed to. It achieved its purpose, all the expenditures tied out. And so we would say with everything we looked at, which, just over $8 million in expenditures, we looked at just over 7.6 million, which is ninety-five percent, and we found a hundred percent compliance with all of those expenditures. All questions were answered by the district finance staff and the documentation that was there from that standpoint. So, so the report is a very clean report. Everything went very well. We find that the, the job that you guys are doing in dedicating the funds that you asked the community for, that they provided, you guys are meeting your commitment. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the committee members that helped do this. There was a lot of invoices to look at, and we spent several hours after work one night. Jennifer Yount and Bill Clem helped me go through this. Took us about six hours to, to get it done. But the real thank you goes to Marshall and the staff. They spent about over a hundred hours putting everything together for us to be able to look at in as short a time as possible. The one thing that I want to give you a preview on is next year, I'm not a hundred percent certain how we're going to do this. As I've talked to Marshall about it, and we've tried to, to plan on this, due to DESI's required revisions in the charted accounts, these expenditures, as I understand it, are spread out through significantly broader range of accounts. It's going to be harder to track down the documentation, so I think we're going to probably have to take a different methodology. We'll find a way to get it done, but we're going to have to probably be, do more sampling and probably have a little bit less coverage than we've traditionally done on this. But just want to say thank you to Marshall and his staff for the work that they did in helping us put this together. But we're happy to say as a committee that the, the Board and administration are keeping the commitment that you guys made to the community as we campaigned to pass Prop R.
Could you say that one more time to the recorder over there? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Any questions related to what we did?
Mark, I'd like to say thank you to you and the Finance Committee. We know what an undertaking this is for you guys, and the fact that you guys are willing to do this for us, one, to hold us accountable, to hold the administration accountable. And that was the whole purpose of Prop R, was to make sure that if we pass this, that we would do exactly what we said we would do for our community, because they stepped up for us. And the hours you guys put in are amazing, and we appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to ditto that remark. I know you guys worked hard, and as you know, we, in the past, the Board has always kind of had this reputation that we had to overcome, you know, that we were mismanaging money, or not spending it the way we should, or wasting money. And I, I'm really grateful that, you know, we finally now have a group of educated finance people that can look it over very carefully and, and determine that we're doing exactly what needs to be done for our district and exactly the way we told the taxpayers that it would be handled. And for that, we thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our update on our universal free breakfast pilot at Forter.
Oh, good evening. So I'm here to report the success of our pilot program over at Forter. So just a quick review, there's some data on before the pilot. I provided this to you back in January on where we were with our participation. And during our pilot, as you could see, that all areas from full pay to reduced to free have all gone up. So we're, that was one of our goals. That's just, shows once again the same data, and as a whole, we're up twenty-two percent. Some more kids are eating breakfast with us at school. This is just showing it on a bar graph for the bar graph people.
Good to you, Kevin.
I don't know, Kevin, if you're a bar graph more dad, I don't know, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Kevin's writing something down.
Just to remind you guys that we are still claiming the kids in their pay category, so we're still getting, claiming them at 31 cents for our full pay. Reduced-price kids, we're getting $1.84 and $2.14 for all of our free kids for federal reimbursement. And once again, it wasn't our goal to have a gain, it was just a break even, but with more kids coming in and keeping, I didn't add any labor, which has been a huge, I mean, Forter staff has been amazing, the teachers, the staff, they're on board. We couldn't have done it without them. So we're basically rolling, yeah, kudos to all of them, their teachers, the kids are eating in the classroom. It's custodian, so spills happen, but it, it wouldn't have been able to be where we're at without their, their huge support. So with that, I, like I said, it's a... With that, um, I, like I said, it's a huge success. And whoops, I didn't put a slide in there, but I'm hoping that with the success of it, that you guys would approve us continuing the pilot through the end of the school year. The universal free breakfast program. And if you have any questions for me, I'm glad to take them.
No, I will say, I talked to some of the teachers at Forter, um, when we first approved this and not only were they thankful, but just hearing the story of the kids and one crying and it was just very sweet, so I'm really glad that this has worked out so well. And I'm glad you guys have a great staff over there, thank you guys for what you're doing. All right, would somebody like to make the recommendation?
Sure, I'll make it. I move the Board of Education approve continuing the universal free breakfast program. Oh, there's something in the way of it, uh, for the rest of the year.
No second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will consider the messenger bid.
Good evening, I have, um, bid results for the Melville Messenger, it's our quarterly newsletter that is a top source of information in our community. This year, we put the printing and the bulk mail preparation up for bid and received six bids. The lowest bid was from the Missouri, uh, Missourian Publishing Co- Company. And they are a current printer and have provided us with excellent customer service, so I'd recommend we stick with them for the next year's printing.
Does anybody have any questions? Can I get a recommendation?
Move to approve the lowest qualified bid submitted by Missourian Publishing Company in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-four cents for the printing and mail handling of four issues of the Melville Messenger.
Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. All right, consider bid to replace bleachers at Melville High School. A long overdue project.
Well overdue, good evening. Um, yes, the bleachers that are currently there, um, were constructed in nineteen sixty-seven and, um, they're basically a two by four treated, two by four with fiberglass, plastic cover over them and they are getting brittle and cracked and they've served their purpose and they're, they're due to be replaced. The new bleachers will be a, um, galvanized steel constructed structure and then a aluminum base seating on top of that. There will also be, um, ADA compliant ramp with, uh, also a walkway from the south gate. There'll be some additional hand railing and fencing around the bleachers. I would move, I'd like to move to approve the lowest qualified bids submitted by Kozini Wegener in the amount of six hundred and one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and eight cents, which includes professional and contingency fees. Any questions?
No? Can I get a recommendation?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, budget development, what kind of ties you got on?
Spring training.
Spring training.
Baseball, spring training, our budget's in spring training, so we're getting there, but not quite, not quite done. So when we look at the, uh, update on the, the budget today, first of all, just a quick word on, uh, this current year and the forecast. We had a budget adjustment in February and really immediately, uh, with DESI updates, the budget adjustment became a little bit outdated. So this is just to show that adjusted budget line down there that says a hundred and twenty-one million, one twenty-three. Now my projection is up to one twenty-one, four forty-two because of DESI updates to the formula and the sales tax. So that's a change of three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars just on those two line items since the February adjustment. And those are based on some reading between the lines of what DESI does target. Because DESI, you'll notice in parentheses on the formula and the Prop C sales tax line items, the formula is, I'm forecasting it sixty-two eighty-five state adequacy target per eighty, per WADA. And DESI's cautiously targeting, is how they worded it, they're cautiously targeting sixty-three oh eight. So I'm gonna go with sixty-two eighty-five, which is a difference of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we, we may get more money. Same thing with the sales tax, I'm going with a thousand six, they're targeting a thousand nine, there's a little bit of a difference there. So it's not an exact science, but, you know, just sort of shows you where we're at on that. So then, uh, and also to note, if you, if you think, if you just look at those five items, you know, the other comment is, is that, you know, when you look at our financial statements, there's many, many items on the revenue financial statement, but those five items alone make up eighty-seven percent. So, you know, you can look at the revenue statement, many items, but when, in the nutshell, if you know what's going on with those five items, you've covered eighty-seven percent of our budget. So those are the items that I'm really gonna talk about briefly tonight as to, sort of where we stand right now in the budget process. The largest item is current taxes. You can see the history of the chart there, uh, from two thousand and seven on up to two thousand and eighteen of our assessed value. And you can see the, you know, the percentage change from year to year. You'll note at the top, it notes that on the odd years, those are reassessment years, even years, they're non-assessment. So this is an odd year, twenty nineteen, it's a reassessment year. You're gonna tend to have more volatility, um, you know, in, in the assessed value this year. One of the things to look at that's just a, an interesting fact is that highlighted, uh, bullet point in section number one there. Ten years after the two thousand and eight year of AV, you look at the two thousand and eight AV, it was one billion, eight hundred and eighty-four million. If you go on up to twenty eighteen, last fall, our AV was one billion, eight hundred and twenty-five million. That's fifty-nine million dollars less than what it was ten years ago. So prices go up every year, well, over the last ten years, it's been down fifty-nine million or three point one percent. That would equate to roughly, in a simplistic calculation, of two point three million dollars worth of revenue. So I just think that's important to keep in mind, uh, because, you know, school budgets are sort of set on values going up. So it's, you know, it was rough to take that hit. That's just something to keep in mind. So down to the bottom, you know, what are we gonna budget? Well, the other thing too, that you've heard me say numerous times in the notes section on number two, the tax rate last fall is four dollars and fifteen cents, it ranks twentieth out of the twenty-two, uh, county districts. That's important to keep in mind. And then note number four, uh, just to understand the sensitivity of the collection, the three-year average of our collection percentage of what we collect versus what we levy, it's ninety-seven point one two percent. For every one one-hundredth of a percent variance of what we actually collect is seventy-five hundred dollars, one tenth of a percent is seventy-five thousand dollars and ten per, and one percent would be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you're off just one percent on your collection, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar variance to your budget, so there's high sensitivity. Down on the bottom section, um, you can see the budget for fiscal year nineteen is seventy-three million, five hundred thousand. It's just too early yet to project anything, uh, for next year. Any day we're supposed to get some March assessed values, uh, this year we'll get March, an update in July, and then final in September. Two years ago, in twenty seventeen, when they came out with March, it changed by fifteen million dollars by the time it got to September. So even when we get this March report, you're still in guesswork for your budget. Next thing is the basic formula and there, there's five main factors that really cause, uh, that go into the basic formula calculation. But the two biggest factors that fluctuate more than anything is the WADA and the state adequacy target. And so I've got up there on our, uh, screen, the fiscal year twenty budget, uh, estimate right now. Our WADA, if we use ninety-nine hun- uh, ninety-nine hundred and then our state adequacy target, if we estimate at sixty-three fifty. Once again, DESI is cautiously targeting sixty-three seventy-five, so I'm using sixty-three fifty for now. And we'll see how the spring goes and what kind of, you know, communications we get on updates from DESI. But right now, I'm using sixty-three fifty, the DESI target is sixty-three seventy-five. That's a difference in revenue of two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So it's just sort of good for you to see the assumptions right now that go into that basic formula. You work down the formula, it's seventeen million, oh ninety-four, uh, that's basically an increase of three point one percent or five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars over our current forecast. So it gives you, you know, sort of a, a quick view of where we're at right now in the budget process for the formula. Sales tax, um, is based on the prior year WADA. So right now, our forecast, if we use the per student estimate of a thousand six per student, DESI's targeting a thousand nine. Uh, next year, they're targeting a thousand thirty-six, I'm using a thousand thirty-one right now. All this stuff can change, but this is, this is where we're at right now. Estimated increase is about two hundred thousand dollars or two percent. VIC, uh, once again, it's really based on the estimate of our students. So, um, the fiscal year forecast of, uh, two hundred and eighty-four students on average, our fiscal year twenty budget is using two fifty-two. Both of those, if you multiply by seven thousand dollars, gets you that gross amount due. And then you have some adjustments for any Title I money that went towards those students. And then because you're always estimating, uh, they'll pay you based on estimate and they'll look at your actual students and true that up the next year. So you always have a true up difference. Basically, this year, fiscal year nineteen, we're getting a million, eight sixty-three, I'm projecting a million, six oh nine. It's about a two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar decline because we continue to drop, um, the number of VIC students each year. When it's all said and done, um, preliminary budget, if we're our best guess right now and a big guess on taxes, if I just say, okay, if assessed value goes up, I think the CPI is gonna be around one point nine percent in that ballpark. If assessed value goes up that much, we would have an increase of like one point four million dollars on the local taxes. That's a big if, we may, you know, and may get a report, you know, tomorrow that does not show that, so. If we, if we can capture the entire one point nine percent increase and if these other categories don't change, this would be where we would stand right now with the, uh, five key items. It'd be a one point nine million dollar increase, a one point eight percent increase overall on those five big categories. So like I said, we'll continue to monitor things, I'm sure there'll be some adjustments as we get deeper into the spring. But right now, this is the best picture of what it's looking at like right now. And that's all I've got.
All right, any questions? Thank you for the update. All right, and criteria for performance excellence. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for the, uh, chance to present to you tonight. Take a look, tonight, we're gonna talk just briefly about the voice of the customer and customer engagement, so that's our students. And, and what do we do to engage them in their educational process by looking through a lens of leverage? So you can see, just a reminder every month, um, you know, what is it and why do we do it? And it really boils back to those three particular questions of, are we doing as well as what we could? How do we know? And then what improvements should we be making as we kind of uncover things in the process, how do we just get better?
All right, three point one for customers, it's about how we are obtaining our information from our students and customers within the district. How do we listen to, interact and observe, um, and work with our customers and obtain actual information? In addition to the items that we listed up there, we also know that we're working on focus groups. We use thought exchange to gather information. We have communications department surveys, building surveys, parent group meetings, including president, council meetings, Board of Ed listening sessions, community engagement activities, including sixty-plus and community partnerships with civic organizations.
And I think one of the big things to, just to point out is there may be a lot of things that we do, but this isn't designed to be a checklist to say, oh, look at all the things we're doing. It's also designed to say, okay, what aren't we doing? And so one of the things that we, Adam and I, as we've discussed these topics on a month-to-month basis, we've pulled others in as well, is that this is one where we feel like we have access to a lot of information, but sometimes we have so much information and what are we doing with all of that information? And really it boils down to problem solving. And, and that's, you know, sometimes we need information and are we using the right information? To really be able to make it actionable. And, and so sometimes that is a gap, I think, for us. With this next piece, when you say, how do you listen to potential students and about objectionable, or about actionable information? There are pieces that we do. The, the voice comes out with the offerings that we, we offer at our elementary schools, our middle schools and our high schools. There are things that we do such as open houses at our middle schools and high schools. There's also community involvements, whether those are ice cream socials or playground dates for our youngest of students. There are opportunities for the community to be able to come together and engage in the process. What we find as a highlight is that some of those opportunities are things that really do build community. And part of that, you know, is when you're dealing with students, those are opportunities we have to first engage with students and to kind of get ourselves set on the right foot. But it also provides a listening opportunity if we're doing it the right way.
So how do we qualify and determine our satisfaction dissatisfaction engagement? And some areas that we use, this year, we are using Panorama for the first time in, in grades K through eight. We are moving that to K twelve next year, uh, just to work on our social emotional learning competency feedback from students and staff. As Scott talked about tonight, we have our IPI measures. We are doing a safety project, uh, for the last three years with UMSO, uh, in our secondary schools. And then we have our student representatives on this Board of Ed and student government and all of our buildings. We also put in that we have our character ed surveys to measure climate of our school buildings. And we're working on developing teacher surveys as a universal across our district, which we thought was kind of a gap.
Next, it's all satisfaction relative to competitors and it's hard, I think, sometimes in education to say, well, that district's a competitor or tho- that, that group's a competitor. But it's always about comparisons, how are you doing comparison to others? And this one really picks upon, how do we obtain information from students and how do you obtain information from parents? So a lot of what we do will come through the registration and enrollment process. That's our first dive into collecting information on a student. But there's many other things that we have and that, that's grades, attendance, enrollment, honors, awards, service opportunities. And one of the gaps that we found is that there's a lot of stuff that we collect, but not necessarily everything goes into the modules of SIS. And so that's one of the things that, over the course of the last year to year and a half, we have discovered little things through the process of either information that we're not collecting or information that we're not sharing out that would be beneficial to either our, to our parents. A nursing example where we've, uh, made, available to our parents, the health records with all the shots that were already there. But then if they ever needed that for their own records, that we, we never, they never had access to it. So there's some things along the way that we have found that we've tried to make it available electronically in that process. And there are other gaps that I know that we've had, that we've discovered to fix. But again, when you're finding gaps, our, the next goal is to try to improve the structure so you not continue to have a gap.
So three point two talks about customer engagement. How are we engaging students and customers, community members, uh, into listening to and serving their needs and building those positive relationships? So we talked about our program services and offerings that we have in the district. We, of course, follow Missouri graduation requirements and DESI recommendations. We ask for student interest. We make sure that we have certified folks that are working with students every day and working in our buildings. We have great collaboration with special school district. And we also are continuously comparing ourselves to other districts in the state of Missouri, our region, and also beyond in terms of best practices and innovation. A gap that we did identify is just that competing resources that are always there for student opportunities and supports that we have throughout our district.
Next, when you think about how do we enable others, our students, to be able to seek information? So the process of finding information out, we find that there's obviously a lot of one-way layer of communication. So that can be website, social media, email, text, uh, phone call. So that can be website, social media, email, text, uh, phone calls. Uh, we have resources that we can commit to our students to assist with that communication, uh, including counselors, special education staff, E L staff. So there's a lot of resources that are there. What we really feel that when we look at our system and where's their gap? And that's, you know, we have students that will always require more services than even all of the structures that we can provide to, to put around them. We, we would refer to those as wraparound types of services where everywhere you go, that there's a support that's in place. It's always trying to be able to identify areas where a student may not necessarily feel supported or it's a documented level of support. Not like kind of the, the cat chasing its tail, or dog chasing its tail, it's just more of identifying exactly what is in the best interest of students. Uh, Panorama was one of those spaces where we filled a gap because we were, we recognized the need for social emotional learning. We weren't necessarily collecting data on social emotional learning, other than disciplinary refers. So that information we've used, I've really tried to, we've used to improve our system.
Customer engagement and how we're engaging students, um, and building relationships and how we are segmenting those to determine, uh, our market groups. We said that we're using Forecast Five to identify our similar schools and districts for the comparative pur- purposes. We obviously target students who are age three to twenty-one. We have early childhood, elementary, middle and high school opportunities in our district. And we are constantly monitoring our demographics and our patterns of student enrollment um, and those projections so that we can plan accordingly and be strategic. Uh, gap, we were working on it, but we wanted to improve college and career readiness and continue that to be a, a pursuit for our growth, moving forward to support students.
And we heard that tonight from Dr. Clark about what does, you know, what are jobs and what do those experiences look like for kids? We're not a hundred percent certain at this point in time, but the next big job market's going to be because some of it has not even formalized itself yet. So we're always gonna be aiming towards a moving target, but we're getting better at, at trying to be able to put structures in place to be able to do that. With regards to relationship management, how are we managing and building relationships with students as well as the community? There are things that we do, um, the way it's just breakfast, uh, that we had just a couple of weeks ago was a great opportunity for me for the first time, just to be able to say thank you to all of those, those, you know, retirees that we have that really go and just benefit and I think they get a benefit out of it. I know that our students that are involved, we're able to serve roughly eighty-five kids in that process just to be able to provide extra tutoring for kids at the youngest of grade levels. But in terms of student systems, we also have Homer Advisory, TAP, A and P, we have buddy systems in place. So you know, there are some areas where we really have a lot of structures in place to be able to help identify and build and manage relationships. But I think when, when Adam and I had really discussed this topic, there, there's always gonna be a gap there where there are some times where some students don't feel that connection to school and don't feel like they have an adult, no matter how many structures we put into place. You know, that, and we have to find ways to be able to connect with those kids. They can sometimes be the most challenging to connect with, but they're also the most rewarding once you've made a figured out way to be able to make a connection.
And the final part on three point two is complaint management and how we're managing students and other customers' complaints. Um, we have some formal procedures in the, in the district in which we take care of that through Let's Talk that the community can access through this website. There's also formal complaint processes in the policy and rights to file statements of concern at individual buildings. We did say social media sometimes is an unofficial complaint management system that is a little hard to manage, um, in our district. And it's not real systematic.
I think every district, I think it's fair to say that.
But some areas that we thought were gaps were being more effective and efficient. Um, making sure that the issues are getting to the right people, they can address those in a timely and, uh, accurate manner. As well as making sure that we're systematic throughout the entire system, knowing we have multiple buildings, um, multiple, um, one-way, two-way communication systems to make sure that they're working appropriately. And just opportunities to continue to improve our outreach efforts with the community.
The last slide is a summary slide. What we've spent the time on with, with the first three are really more about opportunities for learning about the organization. So that over the next few months, you're gonna see opportunities for application. How are we doing what we're doing or how aren't we doing what we're doing in the process? So you'll see that with workforce, you'll see that with operations, you'll see that ultimately with results as well. And we'll take some time with results because that's a very large, you know, area to unpack because there's a lot of ways that things are measured in the process. Any questions?
I just wanna make a comment, um, and just give some recognition to our parent groups and PTO and how that wraps into what you guys were talking about, especially in the beginning of this presentation. Um, and what they do to support and what the building administrators do to support just that, um, collaboration and making that school community great and, you know, whether it's supporting those ice cream socials or all of those other things that really make a huge difference. And I'm really grateful for all of the parents that help out with that and help our district.
I have a question. I've never used Let's Talk, but I know it's there, but do we know if students use that?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I had one just the other day who, uh, had an interest in an automotive history class. Not at tech school, like I wanna fix cars, I wanna, you know, an au- a history of automotive.
Cool.
And, and he, so he has, that information has gone on to, you know, that can be something that my experience could start to go down one road. And then what is his career path? So it's rare, it is rare, but ironically enough, within last week, we've had one from students.
I'll be darned.
We don't get much, I will say that too.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't get too many of those through that particular platform. Um, you know, more often than not, we will get them through.
They are anonymous, aren't they? I mean, unless the, the, the person tells you who they are or do they?
The ones that I have seen, there have been names that have been attached to it. So I don't know if that's always been the case.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just wanna say thanks for doing this. As you guys go through this process, um, you know, the, the time wouldn't normally be taken to investigate all of these areas because people have other things that they're always doing. So with you guys going after, um, this Baldrich certification and that, finding these things in the processes along the way that are getting fixed and corrected, um, really appreciate you guys, your own personal growth, getting into all of this and then sharing with us what you're learning as you do it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We don't have any comments for the second period of open comments, so Kevin, if you could put us into closed session.
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri revised statutes six ten point zero two one subsections one dash twenty-one and six ten point zero two two subsections one dash six, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting particular employees, six ten point zero two one sub three, preparation for negotiations with employee groups, six ten point zero two one and sub nine, and records protected from disclosure by law, six ten point zero two one and sub fourteen. Tori?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Me, yes.
Thank you guys. Let's do this quick, people.